All right, we're gonna get this meeting started. Call up the order and we need to approve the agenda.
I'll make my first vote first.
Now a second.
Callers in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brian's pointing buttons, just a minute, this could take a while. Got it?
Is that better?
Yes. Minutes of the July first, two thousand twenty-five board meeting.
I'll make my first vote first.
Now a second.
Callers in favor?
Aye.
Resolution fifty dash two zero two five, transfer of funds from general basics to employee health fund.
I'll move to approve.
Callers in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recorder, black eyes, tiff viewer renewal.
I'll make my first vote first.
Now a second.
Call those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution fifty-one, two zero two-five, set date for public hearing, purchase of U.S. bank building.
That's even set for.
Correct.
I'll make my first vote first.
Now a second.
Seven twenty-nine. Call those in favor?
Aye.
Night heart service agreement. Insurers audit.
I'll make my first vote first.
Gatsby? Okay.
Now a second.
Call those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion on Iowa workforce.
This is my topic. I serve on the Iowa workforce board. And this is for information only for today, and we can decide if we wanna pursue anything. They're in a position that their federal funding has been reduced. This is funding that comes from federal government through the state of Iowa, the Department of Workforce Development, Department of Labor. Jen Erdman is on the Zoom meeting today, she's the one that is the service provider out at Indian Hills. The funding went down, and based on that, the fourteen county area that we're part of is in a situation where they don't have the administrative money to continue as is. They have two options, they can merge, or another option would be for one of the counties to take a lead role in being the administrator for the program. Total federal money is about eight hundred and fifty thousand, ten percent of that goes for administration. That would be eighty-five thousand, Waplo County is the largest county in the fourteen county area. We could propose to take over the administration, we would get paid eighty-five thousand. Trouble is that eighty-five thousand doesn't seem to be quite enough to cover the administrative cost. There's a couple of options there, we could see if we can make it work, 'cause I think there's some efficiencies that could be gained compared to how it's done in the past. Or we could take the eighty-five thousand and between the fourteen counties come up with a little more money to support the administrative cost. It would mean somebody probably in the audit depart- audit area would be the lead person. And so Kelly, your input would be important at this time. It could mean we'd have to hire an employee to operate the administrative part of it. There's some requirements for accounting, and there's also requirements for reporting that the administrative person has to do. If we, there's another option is to let the state just take it over. If we let the state take it over, or we merge with another district, we would lose local control. So that's one of the disadvantages of any of those options. Currently, the board that I'm on, and I'm actually the vice chair of the board, the board is investigating merging with other counties right now. However, I thought it would be reasonable to bring this topic to the Board of Supervisors here to Waplo County and consider if we wanted to do anything. So that was the question. Any questions about that or what it involves?
Questions from the floor?
And of course, if we decide to do, we can decide to do nothing, that's fine, we will probably then have to proceed with the merger. Yes, there'd have to be an agreement. Correct. Yes. In this case, there would be compensation, eighty-five thousand for sure, we'd have to work out details on.
How much are they short?
Probably. It's hard to judge right now, I'd have to do a little more investigation on that, but my thinking is it might be short, you know, like fifty thousand dollars, but that could be shared by the counties.
And they're already looking at merging with.
With the district. Yes, which would be probably some of the, one of the districts in the eastern part of the state. And so it would end up with being a combination of about probably thirty counties altogether, which is, which is fine, it's still still would have some local representation, but you would certainly lose a little bit of what we already have. And Indian Hills actually cannot be the fiscal agent for the project, it has to be either a county or an independent. Even though Indian Hills is a service provider, they cannot be the lead fiscal agent. And I'm, at this point, I'm not giving any opinion, I'd be fine pursuing it, but we'd have to get a a proposed contract from the board, from the fourteen county board, which is county boards of supervisors from the fourteen counties and work from there, so we could leave, we could say we're interested at the point of looking at a contract, or looking at a proposal. Okay, good, yeah, I should have addressed that. Iowa workforce provides services to dislocated workers for primarily that, they do career planning. So one of the significant things that happens, whenever there's a plant like closed down and there's unemployed people, they step into that and help those employees recover from the loss of their jobs. So that's, that's a part of it, but they're always active in the area of helping the employers in the fourteen county area. And there's actually, if you go talk to the employers in our community, the human resource managers, they would say that, yeah, this is a service that they utilize a lot in hiring employees and getting employees refocused and trained for future jobs. And it, you know, it's a program that's been operating in our community for ever, for forty years in different forms out at Indian Hills. Uh, no. It, well, it pays for several staff people at Indian Hills. And so those, those staff people are involved in, in meeting with the unemployed people and helping them get to the next level, so, yeah.
Yeah, more information.
And that's fine, I wanted to get it on the table for discussion. If there's no interest in it from the three of us, that's, that's fine, I'd like to know that. I am fine with seeking more information and bringing it back as, as we can collect it. And that is good enough for now.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you.
All right, any other questions from the floor? All right, number eight, personnel request for payroll approval change of employment, secondary roads. Yep.
I'll make my first vote first.
Now a second.
Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second payroll request for a change of appointment, secondary roads.
I'll move to approve.
Call those in favor?
Aye.
Did we already do the third one? Mark. I'm making sure. Samuel's group, jail expansion presentation. And I think Don's gonna lighten us on. Fifty-eight inmates still housed out of the county. It's a costless, three thousand dollars every day.
Well, good morning, everybody, just going to take a quick moment to thank you all for letting us join with you this morning, running with Chase Canyon. I am a business development manager with Samuel's Group, I'm joined here this morning by Jennifer Dern, our DC of Sales, Jeff Curtis, our GM of Operations, back behind me, Pyram, our summer intern, so he'll be off to Iowa State to do an internship here before too long. Really, the point of our conversation here today was to, as you can see, put together a PowerPoint presentation to help develop the discussion, but really working with us to be more, looking at discussion rather than a presentation. But we do have a couple of discussion topics here, let's do this to help put forward the conversation. Let's do just to help with all of the conversation. Like, to see if we can get some discussion of who we are and get them a bit deeper into Waplo County's typical, the crime rates that we're seeing, what you're done, if you have a current situation, next steps, questions, after a few minutes. So if you guys see anything that sparks a thought or a question, feel free to chime in and kind of go from there. Jerry, Darren, Brian, do you guys see anything I'd like to address aside from what's on the screen here? Okay, yeah, moving forward. So brief introduction. So the Samuel's Group, who we are, we've been in business since, well, I guess I should say we were established back in 2005. So we've been in Iowa for 15 years, Central Iowa for 10. We have two offices, one in Weston, one in Iowa, one in Wausau, Wisconsin. So we operate primarily Iowa, Wisconsin. However, we have taken on a couple of opportunities to see throughout the Midwest. Obviously, not in the Midwest, but most recently we changed an agreement to work with our construction services provider for their new, what is it called?
You know, just average.
Yeah, and that's kind of just the point I was making is that we're fairly well respected throughout the construction floor. We've got a lot of construction projects. That can sort of, kind of how large your first team works. Kind of get things rolling on that end. We do employ about 80 individuals throughout Wausau, with, yeah, Wausau and with office. Do about 100 million, so I can talk to my taxes. And I make the argument that about 90% of our portfolio in Iowa stems from like our county public government. So facilities, courthouse renovations, offices, obviously what we're talking about today, red carpet, etc. So we do, you know, a little bit of, like, extension stuff. But really, what I think kind of said most of part is we're able to label ourselves as a construction manager. I think what you'll find is that there's a lot of contractors out there that can build something for you and where we kind of try to fit the different levels of others. I guess in addition to sort of to get you on screen here, and you can make the argument that what I'm about to say falls under the construction plan. But early on, we can provide master planning, facility assessment, and speed study studies to kind of help with those discussions, to put the bottom, uh, counties, some of which have a concept in mind, some of which don't know, you don't know. Extremely valuable process, right side, because it's a right side project. Helping by, so, so. Moving on, obviously, we're here to talk about Waplo County jail. Wanted to touch on our specific issue that's pretty much here. Um, I guess, at the government, you know, so you can see on screen here, I think throughout 10 Iowa counties. Currently have 14 active projects across Iowa, Wisconsin. Something that I wanted to touch on that we don't have on screen, feel free to chime in, but we've completed up to four projects throughout Iowa, with the, Dallas, about three employees. And we're currently under construction, I think, to expand that, step that out to three-year venture. So now that's a 43-bed facility, about 16 beds, so, uh, two, uh, two dimensions. Um, a little bit about, yeah. And honestly, again, Jeff, if I was to keep through projects, yes, I think that's a, so. I guess with that, are there any questions about who we are, what we do, how we do it? Kind of getting to how. Yeah, apologies. Okay, yeah, we were just trying to, I guess, I guess that here's on to, apologies. So we're going to dig into Waplo here a little bit specifically, which is obviously why we're here. I'll be sure to probably lean on Don and Jason, given the fact that they're living in this world every day. This next slide here is, shows a little bit about Waplo County and the crime rate. As you can see, 2024 versus 2023, and the trends that we've seen. The whole purpose of that first table is essentially to kind of show you guys, the general public, the amount of activity that we're seeing here in Waplo County versus its neighboring counties. Obviously, you can see that it's on a per 100,000, you know, population. I know you guys have it right around 35,000, so, you know, do a little quick math there. You're right around 2,800 on the offenses, but regardless, you know, you're much higher than that at the neighboring counties. That second table there is just talking about the type of offenses, the security of the offenses, and how that trend, how those trends work on a year-over-year basis. I guess maybe here's where I will, you know, stop rambling on and loop in, you know, Don and Jason here. Could you guys maybe share a little bit about kind of what you're seeing in your day-to-day operations and how those are affected by these crime raids trends? And then as I move on to the next slide, I'll have you talk a little bit about the situation in the meeting.
You know, the crime rate is, as all three of you probably know, and particularly Darren, with past law enforcement experience, it just continues to climb. And with that continuance of climbing, you know, they go to jail and then it seems like they don't leave from there for a while. And if they do, they're re-offending and coming back. It's kind of revolving door that, you know, if anybody had the fix for that, they'd be a very rich person, I believe. But we can't seem to break the mold on that revolving door scenario. So the crime rate in Waplo County just continues to keep climbing. And so I think that's what's leading to our, part of what's leading to our farming out of inmates. We will probably get into this more, but I believe that the court system, and when I say the court system, it's not just not judges, it's just the, you know, prosecutor, defense attorneys, that these cases aren't moving through the system as quickly as I believe that they are able to. So it's, we've met with the county attorney, we've met with the court administration, trying to figure out what we can do. We're looking to have some meetings in the future with some chief judge here in our district to try and see if we can move these things along a little quicker to maybe eliminate this. But because this is such a long process, you know, we felt that we needed to bring this before you and start looking at some type of expansion. So I guess that's kind of where I'm at with it. You know, Jason can speak on some of this also, but, you know, our facility is 148-bed facility. We added 16 beds back in 2020, just before COVID. We met with the jail, we have a jail inspection every, every year, of course, in November, and we were able to discover that we could add some beds to our facility, and we added those beds. The issue that comes into that is the classification. So we're not able to classify them properly because there are certain criterias the state has in place for us. We'd, so that leads to us farming out inmates. Even though we're nearly full at the jail, we still have to farm out inmates. Have a weird little thing that I looked at, you know, back when COVID happened, that the jail population dropped because they were releasing those folks. In '23, on July 15th, we had 15 inmates farmed out. In '24, we had just over 30. And as of today, I looked, we were at 47 farmed out, I believe it was. But the ironic thing is, we just had 56 the other day. Some of those inmates have been brought back because they have court dates and stuff. So, you know, we're spending, you know, thousands of dollars a day to, on transports, or thousands of dollars a week in transports, going to get these folks, bringing them back, or taking them out. But, you know, just at the average of 56 inmates, I think it is, farmed out, you know, we're on average of $1.1 million. You know as well as I do, I have $350,000 budgeted this year. It's going to be a huge impact on our budget. The, you know, and if the trend continues like it has the last three years, where we're jumping up by, you know, 10 or 15 or 20 inmates per year on average farmed out, you know, that's going to put us up, you know, close to one and a half million dollars. So that's why we're here, you know, I, you know, it's a 25-year-old building. We've worked on some updates on rooftop units being replaced. You know, we had a company come in and redo some, the outside of the building and seal it. We learned that there was no sealer applied to the concrete on the outside when it was built. So we did that. And, yeah, the electronics in the building, you know, if we were to add on, even if we weren't to add on, we're, you know, 25 years old and we're having to steal electronic boards from other areas to make things work. And we're trying to update those. So there's a, there's some things going on that need to be addressed, as you can see. That cover everything.
I rambled on, it felt like. Jason, do you have anything?
So any questions from you guys on that?
Well, we know when this was built, we was going to make all this money housing inmates for other counties.
Yeah, and I think, I think the county did that, yeah, when it was originally built and was able to do that. You know, the discussion with previous board members prior to COVID about, you know, do we need to look at adding on and start doing that process? And then COVID happened, and then our numbers have just continued to decline since then. So there was some small conversation as to whether or not we needed to. Could we add on and finish out the first floor? But, you know, just with this scenario we're currently in, I think that, you know, we'd have to finish both floors if we were to move forward with this. You know, another thing is, is, you know, people aren't held accountable because we don't have the bed space to do their sentence time, you know.
Repeat offenders are the crime rate.
And, you know, when you can't hold them accountable, then they feel like they're just going to keep doing whatever. We've had those conversations, Darren and I both, with people who are arrested, that they don't care because they ain't going to do any time. So, you know, that's a, that's another issue that we have going on with the sentenced inmates or sentenced people aren't able to get into the jail and do those times.
Travis?
So we're supposed to, there's several different ways that we're supposed to classify people. When possible, we can, we're supposed to try to keep sentenced inmates from pre-trial inmates, things like that, when doable. Unfortunately, we're not in the spot that we're able to do that. We do have some inmates with special medical issues that they need to be by themselves, and they are in a spot that is taking up six beds. We have two people that are taking up six beds that we can't house other people in there. It's a 25-year-old building. We have plumbing issues. We have, like you mentioned with the electronics, we have cell door issues where we can't use our electronics to open the doors. It's an older building. I understand that 25 years old isn't that old, but when it's being used 24 hours a day and people are using toilets and trash and things like that, that's why we see the plumbing issues and sink issues. And then on top of that, you know, getting replacement parts for those issues takes time, so that keeps cells down. But as far as the classification, just keeping people separate that need to be separate. They might be co-defendants in a case, they might have no contact orders, they might have problems in the street that they want to fight each other. So we got to try to keep people separate when we can, and we're not always able to do that. And we got to get creative at times.
And the different levels of risk.
Correct, there's different levels of the risk. You know, if they've been in our facility before, have they been problems while they're there? What are they charged with? More serious crimes, they end up in other areas of the jail. So, yeah, it's a, it's a challenge, that classification portion of it.
And how many females do we house?
We can house up to 20. Unfortunately, the way that we're having to house them because of classification issues, we're housing them in our work release units, which is a dorm style. Nobody's ever been in a jail environment. Females do not get along with each other when they're around each other for 24 hours a day. So there's times we've got to keep separate for different reasons. We don't have a unit that we can use for suicide walks for female. So we have to do them in our intake area. So that takes up cells and intake when we have new people come to jail. That can complicate things if two people come in fighting, can't put them in the same cell. So there's just problems of where we're able to put people and house them properly.
Any other questions from before? Could I comment? One of the reasons I'm interested in looking at doing something in terms of new construction is this idea that if our jail population does go down, we could then rent out or make income off of those cells. And so either way, whether we, whether we need it or not, we can still, I think, make it work. So that's one reason why I'd be interested in thinking about expansion. On the other hand, I'm still, you know, we've had discussions about this for two and a half years that I've been involved. And I would still like to work towards some short-term solutions. And we've talked about this, and that's working with the county attorney and the district court system, as Don mentioned, to try to do some improvements in that. And I'd also like to always consider how we can solve the real problem in our community, and that is to reduce crime. That's, I know, Don, you said it correctly. If we could solve that, we'd all be, be good. But we should, should still, as a community, attempt to solve the real problem. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, moving on. I mean, one last thing I would touch on, I know Don just talked about the, you know, the transportation. I mean, we have that listed there, the thousand miles a month that you guys are transporting, but also what that does to your staff's time on the road and what that takes away from, you know, protecting the community that we talked about here today. I think that's an important aspect of it as well. Moving on, I think, talk about next steps and maybe loop in Jeff here a little bit to kind of talk about the high-level process and what that looks like.
Okay, so again, my name's Jeff Curtis. I'm general manager for our Iowa operations group. Currently, along with the counties that we're in, we also do a lot of work for the state through the Department of Administrative Services. And we currently have 28 active projects for them, which include, I do believe we're in 90% of all the correctional facilities here in the state. So we have a large background in that. And the big thing, like everybody's alluding to, this is a continuing issue that unfortunately there's no short-term fix for that. So involving with that short-term fix, like you said, it's a great idea to talk with the county attorneys and the magistrates to try to find a short-term solution. What we're here to do is talk about a long-term solution. And what we, what we offer is, we offer a professional service agreement status-type proposal to where we come in, we work with Don and his staff, with Jason, looking at the current facility, looking at the current bed design, housing design, and if there's any way to improve that with some efficiencies, and then also look at the possible or potential expansion, like where everybody's alluding to. As part of that expansion, again, we know that the original building was designed for expansion. It does have a footprint laid out, ready to go, along with additional parking when needed. So with doing that, it would be potential to say near image of the existing pod, but we can reconfigure the interior portion of that with walls and designs and cells to accommodate more classification scenarios. Back in 2000, the classification process wasn't as defined as it is now. Nice thing about the state DOC, they, they definitely work with the counties trying to find out more efficiencies where we can, they can get more beds. If the potential of the inmate being farmed out does decrease, like we said, we're in a lot of the counties already. It's not uncommon for counties to be in a position that Waplo County is right now. Currently doing a jail down in Page County and Small County, again, they are farming out. I do believe last count on that was 16 or 18 offenders on a daily basis, at the current amount. So with doing that, what we would do is meet with them, come up a proposal, and what we do is we give you a guarantee not to exceed fee, and it's based on our hourly rate. So, and again, it's very high level to where we go in, we do the facility assessment, we go in, we look at the classifications, and in turn, what we can do is then is propose a overall design concept, schematic design, with a high-level budgetary number associated with that, so everybody understands what we're looking at. Of course, everybody understands the cost of facilities is not going to change. So part of that pricing exercise, we can show you what escalation factor has been going on a yearly basis. So again, it's high level, and then we proceed after that. I'll say, you guys, yeah, we want to do an expansion, what type of timeframe are we looking at? How do we go about the funding portion of that? Again, that's all services that we can offer. We have done it in the past, Page County, Webster County. Page had to end up going out for a general bond obligation referendum. We end up getting that passed. So we work with Dallas County, Clinton County, all those working on that type of referendum if needed. So again, it's a matter of looking at what the current facility is and showing you the board and then also the public why the expansion would be needed if so. Any questions?
So the idea is you would give us a proposal on a plan with the price of that, the work you would do?
Correct. What we would do is give you, again, what's called a PSA, a public, a professional service agreement, of which is lined out exactly at this tier, it's this, everything at that point is what we call a team, a time and material style. You only get charged for the hours we use, and we're fully transparent on the entire process. With us being in this industry, we are, we always have multiple projects that are under bidding. We, we have our own estimating department, so we have real-time, real-life, actual numbers that are being calculated and tabulated every time we get a bid. So we put that all in our database, and then we are able to reflect relatively close. When I say relatively, again, depending on what's happened in the current construction environment right now. Everybody understands, right now it's a little bit volatile. We're running into some tariff issues and some procurement issues. But again, we're able to forecast that with the past that we've seen. So again, we are very experienced in that to make sure we can give you the best professional opinion.
We really can't decide anything today as far as telling them. So, and Don, you're, you're okay with this first step to at least get a proposal back from them? Is that correct?
Well, what I, what I would suggest to the board is we, we have that professional agreement sent to us, and then we would, I would submit it to you, to, for your review and to, to, rather or not move forward or not. So that's what I would suggest. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, typically, we make ourselves, you know, things or clarifications on that front. But, I mean, just high level, I mean, you're maybe from very beginning to the end, say, you're kind of looking at three separate, excuse me, three separate stages. Kind of stage one, we're talking about all that, that's kind of that first step. From there, this makes me assumption you guys, like, before you're talking about, you know, that pre-graduate, that, um, construction document design, from there, you're getting the, just real high level. That's just about that.
So this first phase would be a fairly quick turnaround. Once you say, yes, we're happy with this PSA, we want to go with this. We have the bandwidth, the latitude, where we can turn that around in a couple of minutes to show exactly what you're looking at that way. You can start forecasting, seeing where the trends are current from today to when we come up those numbers with your offenders or clients that are being farmed out at that point in time. So you can do some budget forecasting. So again, I think when Don and Jason started looking at what they're farming out and the overall budget impact that they're seeing, the number was definitely a good slap in the face because when they can anticipate a million dollars to transfer folks to different towns, so that is a lot of money over, basically, on a year-based basis with the increase that we're seeing, it's up looking. Okay, so then our next step moving forward, we'll, we'll get a PSA put together. Do you want us to send that to Don directly, or do you want to send it to?
Yeah, just send it to Don.
John first, yeah. We'll get that worked up, see that probably here in the next couple of days, if not early part of next week. And then get that out in front of everybody, and then we can be back down here at any point in time.
Okay. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
All right, set a public hearing for July 29th, 2025, 9:30 a.m. for final plat for Yulin subdivision.
Now I'll move to approve the public hearing?
Just public speak at that, correct? Okay, because I had a few phone calls coming, just to give you a heads up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any other business? We got the treasurer's semi-annual report, January through June 2025.
I'll move to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Treasurer's investment report, June 2025.
Now a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Recorder, fourth quarter 2425 report, fees collected and dispersed.
I'll move to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Year-end fiscal year 2425, report fees collected and dispersed.
I'll move to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any other business?
Good morning, I just wanted to, this is Jared Hirschberry with Dusty Fox Wind, if you guys don't know me already. We just closed our community grant down. I want to let you guys know that we're going to get $5,000 to the Waplo World Fire Department. So that'll be going there. I think they're going to use it for some new hoses, if I'm remembering correctly. And then the last thing I think I have for you guys, we, we were there at the P&amp;Z meeting. I thought it went really well. Draft ordinance that we've seen is, is, you know, it's a little stricter than I think we'd like to see, but it is very buildable, so I, so I know the next hearing, I think, is around 28th. 28th, and then it will be sent to you guys. So I would like you, what do you guys think about the here, the upcoming year? I think you guys have to give the public a 10-day notice. Our preference would be to do it consecutively, weekly, if possible. So depending, no matter what, I imagine you guys want to do kind of a morning, noon, and afternoon and night sort of hearing for everybody, but we're open to however you guys want to do it. Just, we want to be here to help answer any questions you guys have. So anything else for me? So, anything else for me?
Did they revise that, or we have to draft for? Oh, I thought you said they were going to. Oh, I thought you told me that they were going to, they had a couple of things that wanted to make.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, make the motion to adjourn then.
A second?
Fair?
Aye.
Mark, we'll. Do you want to do it in here? Yeah, that's fine, we can just do that here at the table, so.